Orders.
Pacino.
Here.
Evans is absent. Kaiser White.
Here.
Moody.
Here.
O'Toole.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Madam Moore.
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
Next item of business, approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda? Anyone on the commissions? Now, take a motion.
Approve the agenda as presented?
Yep.
I second.
All right, moved in second, did all those in favor?
Alright.
Passes. Uh, next will be the, uh, reading of the minutes. I don't, oh, okay, we'll just skip that. We'll go to the planning commission meeting minutes from nine twenty-two, twenty-five. Any changes, comments? Got a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes.
Right, second. Second, Pacino, all those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Uh, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anyone who wished to address the commission on a non-agenda item? Anybody online? I don't see any, alright, we'll carry on. Uh, planning commission and staff reports and comments. You got anything, Phillip?
No announcements.
Cue disclosures, ex parte communications. Anyone? We're good, we'll just carry on. Uh, current planning projects. Emma, you're up, take it away.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. This afternoon, I'll be presenting over the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning request for the 4G Enterprises' property area. And we do have the applicant and representative Brad Enzie here tonight. This request would change the future land use map designation from urban commercial to urban residential to allow for R3 multifamily zoning in accordance with adopted city housing plans and policies. We've received four public inquiries so far, mainly about flooding, traffic, and the triangular parcel, two public comments which have been forwarded to you, and four in-person public comments at the last meeting relating to similar topics and neighborhood character. So for the speech outline, first, I'm gonna go over the background and some of the additional information that was provided. Then I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city engineer and floodplain administrator. I'll come back, close it out, and then open it up for questions. So, to begin with, I'd like to provide a history, an overview of the site's history. So it's deeply tied to Laramie's industrial railroad past. It was owned by Union Pacific Railroad, which operated a railroad machine shop and associated infrastructure on the property. Until nineteen eighty-eight, 4G Enterprises acquired the land and then acquired the parcel that ANC Feed Company is on in two thousand and four. Because of that industrial legacy, the site underwent a Phase One and Two brownfield environmental assessments. Phase Two involved fourteen soil probes and five borings. The findings showed no recognized environmental conditions that required further analysis, and other steps will be up to the developer. That conclusion is documented in the city's brownfield closeout report. So I kinda wanna start off with a similar format as that additional technical memo that was sent out. So I'm gonna start with what can happen on the property as is without any changes. So today, the property is zoned I2 Industrial. Under that zoning, the owner could develop a variety of industrial uses by right, provided they meet all building fire and development standards. A site plan review would be required for new construction, including engineering design reports, traffic impact studies, stormwater management plans, and compliance with Chapter fifteen point two zero of the Unified Development Code. The site plan is approved administratively, as long as they meet adopted codes. And the maximum height in this zoning district is sixty-five feet. If they wanted to subdivide the parcel into multiple industrial lots, that's when you'd see them go through the preliminary and final plat process, which has that additional opportunity for public input. Roughly half of the site lies within the one percent annual flood hazard area and the remainder within the point two percent. Laramie currently has one thousand one hundred parcels and flood hazard zones and two hundred and thirty-two parcels and the one percent flood hazard. So the situation is not unique. All future development, regardless of use, must meet FEMA standards and city code requirements. Access to the site comes from Snowy Range Road, which has approximately eight hundred and thirty feet of usable frontage according to YDOT. From a fire and life safety standpoint, industrial structures over thirty feet high or sixty-two thousand feet requires two access roads. But if sprinkled with an approved system, could go down to one access road for buildings under a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet. In regards to wildlife, residential development is sometimes more compatible with urban wildlife than industrial. But overall compatibility depends on fencing and the amount of green space preserved. Game and Fish acknowledges Laramie's primary role as a centralized place for people to live and work. So now I'm gonna go ahead and move into the proposed change from what could happen as is without changes. The applicant proposes to amend the future land use map from urban commercial to urban residential and to later rezone to R3 multifamily. Under today's plan, urban commercial is designed for pedestrian-oriented mixed-use environments like you see downtown and supports commercial zoning districts. It does not translate to residential zoning. The urban residential designation, however, aligns with R2M and R3 zoning, which allows a range of housing types, single-family, townhomes, and apartments. And through conditional uses, smaller, neighborhood-scale commercial options like light maker spaces or corner groceries. This request reflects how our zoning and housing needs have evolved since the Comprehensive Plan was adopted in two thousand and seven and aligns with adopted plans related to housing. If a new structure or use is going to be set on the property, then a site plan Type Three would be required to hold development to all adopted codes from fire, development, building, and national standards. The maximum height in R3 is fifty feet. And then if the owner wished to divide into multiple residential, then that preliminary and final plat would be required. Staff does recommend including the southern triangular parcel if any changes to the future land use or zoning are made. The city of Laramie has consistently aimed to maintain logical, contiguous zoning patterns that align with parcel and block lines, reflect existing land use, and support the Comprehensive Plan's long-term vision. Past zoning updates have applied designations uniformly across areas to promote fairness and predictability, even when doing so creates some non-conforming uses, an accepted and manageable outcome of modern zoning practice. Including the small parcel in this rezoning continues that approach, preventing a fragmented zoning boundary and ensuring long-term stability of the zoning map while leaving any private agreements between the property owners. Access to the site comes again from Snowy Range Road, according to YDOT. And then for fire code, anything over three units must have approved sprinkler systems. And if anything is built over three stories thirty feet tall or sixty-two thousand square feet, it has to have two means of access. Mortgage and insurance information was requested and flood insurance is required by law. If they have insurance, banks said that they typically consider these requests similarly to other properties. And commercial flood insurance exists with policies currently offered in Laramie. I will now turn it over to the city engineer and floodplain administrator to give an overview of the current protections that the city of Laramie has in place for all development, including those within floodplains.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. For our section, I'll be talking briefly on the engineering design report that would be required with something like this. And then I've also invited Aaron Murray. He's a consultant at WSP here in town. He works with our office quite a bit, assisting with drainage and floodplain management. I'll have him kinda come up and talk about some of the drainage and floodplain for this parcel. Just since we don't have any design specifics, we'll be talking just kinda broad level of what would be required with something like that. To start with on the engineering design report, it is one of the most important documents that we receive for any new development in the city of Laramie. It's submitted along with the construction plans and provides technical details behind the project's water, sewer, storm drainage, grading, and roadway systems and how they're designed. And the goal is to make sure every new infrastructure will work safely and efficiently with our existing city systems and meets all standards set by both the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality and the city of Laramie. When we receive an engineering design report, our staff reviews it carefully to make sure that there's enough water and sewer capacity to serve the site, that fire flow requirements are met, and that all the proposed utilities follow the appropriate design standards. If the project is expected to generate more traffic, it could also require a traffic impact study. That study looks at how much additional traffic the development might bring and checks to see that the intersection in roadways will continue to operate safely and efficiently. The review process involves coordination between several groups internally. That conclude engineering, planning, public works, and our fire department staff. Externally, we could often work with agencies such as YDOT or the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality to make sure everything aligns with both state requirements and best practices. This team approach helps us to ensure technical accuracy, public safety, and the long-term reliability of the city's infrastructure. In the end, the engineering design report is really about protecting the community. It ensures that new developments are built on solid infrastructure, meet design and safety standards, and integrate smoothly with Laramie's existing utility and transportation networks. Above all, we hold paramount the safety, wealth, health, and welfare of the public. And that principle guides every part of our review process and decision-making during our review of the engineering design report and construction plans. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron, and he can kinda start talking about some of the drainage and floodplain in this area.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commission. As Eric mentioned in the design report, there would also be a stormwater portion of that either incorporated within or as a separate report. There would be a stormwater drainage report to describe how the applicant would manage the stormwater on the property to the city of Laramie's standards. For this property, and most of the requirement would be that the one-hundred-year-developed runoff be detained and released at the one-hundred-year historic, or before anything was developed on the site, the one-hundred-year historic rate through a detention pond. The other thing it would need to show is that if the applicant is going to discharge to a city system, that that system has capacity for their discharge. About this property, knowing what we know, there are some systems that are undersized in the area. So they would likely choose to discharge directly to the Laramie River rather than to a system that may not have capacity for additional stormwater. The other thing that would be triggered by development on this property would be a floodplain development permit because it is in a flood hazard area, as Emma mentioned. This property has three types of flood hazard areas. A floodway, which is the area that takes the concentrated flow, high-velocity flow of the Laramie River. FEMA has defined this floodway. And what that means is they've determined that if you were to allow the one-hundred-year floodplain to be completely filled in, that is the space, the minimum space that's needed to have a one-foot rise or less for the Laramie River. So in the floodway, development is really limited. You would have to show that you're creating zero rise. So it really limits any type of development in the floodway. The other piece of floodplain, of flood hazard area is the one percent annual chance or the one-hundred-year flood area. Development is allowed in this area with constraints. One of those constraints is that the lowest finished floor elevation of any structure must be a minimum of one foot above that base flood elevation. The other is any utilities, water, sewer, must be designed to withstand flood flows so you don't create a contamination issue if there is a hundred-year flood. You must buy flood insurance if you have a federally backed mortgage if you're in that one percent annual chance floodplain. If a property owner chooses to elevate their property, they could apply to FEMA and have that removed from the floodplain and remove that flood insurance requirement. That would be the applicant's responsibility to go through FEMA to do that. There also is a point two percent annual chance, also known as the five-hundred-year floodplain on this property. There are no development limitations in that area. One thing I was going to mention, I think the questions that came up last time is improvements or measures that the city has taken to prevent flooding of the Laramie River. And one thing that they have done has installed one-way valves or flap gates on storm pipes that are discharged into the Laramie River so that during high floodwaters, times of high floodwaters during spring runoff, flow camp backup through that system into the city and floods streets that would not otherwise be flooded. The other thing the city does is monitor flood flows at upstream gauges so that they are prepared to construct a temporary burn during, say, a spring runoff event, something they have done in the past, kind of a sandbag burn to protect certain areas of town. And so they are ready to do that, monitoring those upstream flows if it indicates that a flood, a spring flood event is coming. So with that, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Well, let's let him finish up, and then we can ask questions.
Awesome. So thank you to Eric and Aaron for coming to this meeting. And one item that I do kinda wanna caution is that we have provided a much broader background of information than is applicable to these findings. It seemed like Planning Commission had a lot of questions overall, and so we wanted to treat this as an opportunity to just kinda get some background education overall. But I do just again wanna caution that when coming to the decision and discussing the findings that they do have to stay within those required findings. I also wanted to say that all properties do have inherent risk. And currently, our floodplain designations do not prohibit building, but trigger additional requirements in code. Traditionally, the city has allowed the private property owner to make those choices on risk outside of what is outlined in code. And the city needs to decide how much they want to regulate the amount of risk that private property owners can take on and the precedent that could set for future applications. So again, just kinda wanna caution going through the discussion. So for these two applications, the consideration is which uses are more appropriate considering the city policies and adopted guiding plans and precedent. And a supermajority is required for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so needing four affirmative out of the seven members of this commission. Staff supports this future land use change because it meets the required findings. One, several plans have identified new housing need projections, and zoning districts have evolved over time slightly. For two and three, it's also answered by housing need. Laramie is several thousand units behind demand. The Housing Study and Action Plan two thousand and thirty and the two thousand and twenty-four statewide housing need assessment both highlight the shortage of land available for diverse residential development. An urban residential provides a clearer policy basis to support housing than urban commercial. Again, if you kinda look to the screen, you'll see the zoning districts that the future land uses translate to. For five, not applicable, this is not coming out of an air. And then, in conclusion, staff believes that urban residential is the more appropriate future land use designation. It reflects our adopted housing priorities and the changing conditions of the city. And so with that, staff would like to open it up to any questions.
Any questions? Chris?
For Mr. Murray. Does this, in your opinion, does this parcel have any more or less risk, a flooding risk associated with properties on the west side, adjacent to the river?
I mean, FEMA has designated those flood hazard zones. And so if, yeah, if you're within that one percent annual chance, you have the same risk as anyone else who's also in that zone. It's, yeah, no more or less than any other property. But, yeah, that requirement, the protection is really that requirement. If you're gonna develop in that area, is to elevate it at least one foot. And that's the minimum, they can choose to go higher.
Donald?
I'm not sure how I should direct this too, but what fraction of that parcel is designated by FEMA as A, in other words, subject to the one-hundred-year flood risk? Is it, I mean, it looks like forty percent, fifty percent. Do you have a ballpark?
Chair through you. Brian, if you would mind going back one slide on the presentation. So that shows, again, we haven't divided it to the exact square footage, but that goes ahead and gives you an estimate. So the blue is the regulatory floodway. The dark purple is that one percent annual chance. And then the light purple is the point two percent.
So would you give me a ballpark as to what that percentage is, forty percent?
Chair through you, that seems to be about right, but I would need to do more research.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Good, Donald.
Has the city ever designated an area this large with, let's say it's forty percent, subject to the one-hundred-year flood? Have we ever designated an area like this for or three development? Ever?
Chair through you. If you give me a moment, I'm happy to look at our zoning map compared to the flood map and see. But I don't have an answer at this moment.
Sharon, you look perplexed.
Well, yeah. I think this is getting at the concerns that came up and are kind of, I mean, they're triggered when you look at a map like this. I found it useful to step back and look at the larger map where, and the, I mean, quite a bit of building and the community is within the floodplain. And I think you're right, the dark purple is the more significant part. And that's why it was important to me, and I think this additional memo, and wanna thank the staff for it, was very useful to understand, really, you know, what that floodplain map indicates and means. So for me, I think, Donald, your question is important. And I might, I guess, the way I was thinking about it is it's, you know, it's useful to know what the city has approved and not approved. Because I think one of the concerns is, do we want to be encouraging more development within the floodplain? But as I looked back at the purpose of the floodplain maps, it's to highlight where the risk is. But I find myself agreeing with how Emma put it, which is the risk needs to be clear. And that's the purpose of the floodplain map. But it is the developer then who, knowing that, bears the risk. And the choice for us is a significant one because we're changing the comp plan and we are making a final decision about that. But I do think that the purpose of the plan is to guide and kind of capture policy choices. And there have been some policy choices and information that have changed since it was last put in place. So I find myself persuaded by the additional information provided in terms of just that, the limited purpose, but the important purpose of the floodplain map.
Well, we're getting into discussion on the entire comp plan change. There was wondering if we should have the applicant come up and.
Yes, sorry. I did wanna ask the consultant who was here from WSP, in terms of, you may have an answer for us in terms of the amount of building generally that happens within a floodplain. I mean, is it usual or is it unusual? Or can you give us a little bit more about that context?
Yes, so, yeah, we've been helping the city with these floodplain development applications for six or seven years. I don't know whether we see necessarily all of them, but there's probably a couple each year that involve requests to do something in the one-hundred-year floodplain. Very exciting, sometimes it's just a single residential house, but the requirements are the same. So I'd say, yeah, a couple times a year, we see an application for that. Eric, I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Chair through you. I just wanted to address Donald's question. So, Ryan, would you mind going back to slide five? And so that, the map will show specifically that hundred-year and all of the parcels that it goes through. And so there are areas, especially along Spring Creek, where R3 does abut it. However, there isn't another area of that size. I will also caution too that currently the future land use designation for this area is urban commercial, which is again downtown. So that would still be a sizable amount of infrastructure and residential units within that current future land use designation. And so I'd also make sure and caution you to keep that in mind and keep in mind the scope of the application before us.
Mr. Engie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I always feel like this one's super short.
Yeah, do you want to just hit that button to turn screen?
And I don't know how to run the mic to boot. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thanks for having me tonight. Laramie Chamber Business Line stepped in as the applicant on this because we're in dire need of housing. I've got companies that have moved to town. I've got companies that have tried to move to town. And we can't provide adequate housing to support the growth of our community right now. The 4G Enterprises had, I talked to them over the course of several years about what's this property gonna become as the housing delta increased. And they were willing to try to put this, get the changes made to move it forward for development into housing as opposed to an industrial development. Very rarely will you see a landowner do that. And so we stepped in to serve as the applicant on behalf of the company because of the need that we feel as a business community in trying to meet a growing housing need. And it's not, I think we always get into some of these questions about what kind of housing do we need? Well, we need every kind of housing. Then I think the reason to go to an R3 is because that allows the most variability in having something that's shovel-ready. There's not a lot of land in town that you can take and say, this is already set up with the right comprehensive plan and set up with a zoning that allows variability for a developer to buy. So this creates opportunity for us to attract some more developers. With that, I'd stand for any questions or any last time. I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I got caught in that thunderstorm coming back from seeing my son. So I was driving thirty miles an hour.
Any questions?
Maybe it's better directed to Emma. So what sort of incentives are there for the developer to develop, you know, multiple family dwellings as opposed to install single-family residence, large lot? You know, I mean, we obviously don't have anything to play with in the way of a development proposal other than the potential to do those things, which I guess is what we're doing here. But just try to get a little comfort level that there will be a diversity of housing or some incentives to make that happen.
Chair through you. So I think one kind of assurance we have is the application itself. It is very common for, you know, newly annexed land or for rezoning requests to go towards R1. The fact is that the applicant has requested R3, which does allow for that mix of housing. So that in of itself kinda helps show maybe some direction. But again, we do have to consider for any, for any of the applications, the full range of uses that could go in front of it, whether from industrial to R3. And so again, R3 does range from single-family to multifamily. But I would lead you back to the applicant's request was R3. It wasn't already limiting it to only an R1 district for just single-family, let's say.
All right, if I may, it makes it a much easier parcel to develop if you've got multiple housing opportunities on it. And I think that would at at this time for this housing situation in Laramie, having options is a rare occurrence. We don't generally get a lot of options in Laramie. Just my opinion. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Just to begin uh discussion, I think what we need to do before we discuss ourselves, does anybody have any objection for public comment? Go to them first. Does anybody in in the public wish to address this issue? Remember, we're dealing strictly with changing on this issue is changing the comprehensive plan from commercial to residential. Ah it's not the zoning change. This is just basically the changing the comprehensive plan to allow this parcel to be used for zoning. Does anybody wish to comment on that? Go ahead, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Chair, my name's Eric Henderson. And my uh my general concern is as a homeowner in West West Laramie, I purchased my house relying on the zoning, the master plan as it existed in the purchase year two thousand for me. This purchase uh of this industrial land was done likewise. They purchased it knowing that it was a industrial area and there were certain criterias that were by right buildable in that fashion. Um planning department overstates the housing need as several thousand. That's an anticipated number. And though I don't disagree that there are certain types of housing needed, Laramie has shown that they're not interested in doing what's necessary infrastructure wise to protect existing surface water drainage areas of concern, specifically Cedar Street, Fremont Street, Clark Street and those those adjacent areas. It's rather concerning to change in any direction, not knowing a specific site plan for this for this space in its exact nature, type and kind. I would ask that you be very restrictive in going forward if not to totally deny this change whatsoever. Thanks.
Sure. Any other comments? Any? Yes, please come up. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Doug Foss, I'm the CEO of Iverson Hospital. I'm here just really to, um I don't know all the details you're talking about, quite frankly, but I I'm here to just speak for housing, I just as a business, uh that is definitely uh one of our biggest, one of our biggest problems for employees for housing and I've been on the task force in the in the last year or so to help find ways to grow housing. And if this is a way to uh find other ways to grow housing, I would be in support of it. So like I said, I don't know the details of all the things you're speaking of, but if it helps promote uh the increase of housing, I'm in favor, so I I would ask you to vote yes, thank you.
Yes.
I have two online that want to speak.
Uh, one, we'll start with him.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thanks for having me, my name's Admin Account, my name's Nate Martin, I'm a resident on Cedar Street. Um I definitely appreciate the city's position and the business community's position on wanting more housing. Um as a resident of Cedar Street, you know, likewise with the previous speaker, I bought my house in two thousand eighteen with the expectation that the city's master plan would be followed. Um would prefer that area to stay industrial uh in part because of a housing affordability issue. You know, riverfront condos tend to drive up the property values of of an area. And especially if you're gonna have to do all the work and spend all the money to bring in a bunch of land and lift it up out of the floodplain. Uh I can't imagine those are going to be affordable units and, you know, further kind of degrading the working class character of the neighborhood. And I would also push back on the assertion that um residential is somehow better for the wildlife that's down there, which is very beloved by the neighborhood and abundant. You know, we just had a an industrial equipment uh company move in uh right by, right next door to the the property in question, and they brought in a bunch of like a broken up parking lot, and then a few days later I noticed a family of marmots living there. So uh you just gotta never know what's gonna happen with that kind of thing. I I think a lot of assumptions are gonna be made. I get that the city is in a housing crunch, you know, I've I'm in- involved in and supportive of housing um housing efforts, but I I don't think that we can ignore the big problems that are associated with this one in particular, so I'd ask the commission to um reject the request.
Thank you. Thank you much, uh anyone else?
Yep, one more.
I believe you're on, if you care to address us.
They're still muted, it looks like.
Are you muted? Check your mute button.
Uh, am I available to be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, my name is Terry Geis with four G Enterprises. And I'd like to discuss that property just for a second, that it's usually our business uh practice not to discuss what we're planning with that property. But to give a little background, about a year ago, that property was under contract. And due to issues that uh du- du- delayed the opportunity for the developer or the purchaser to move forward, he backed out of the contract. At that time, starting in about February, March, we met with our uh realtor and we said, we have been concerned about what goes on to that property, but we want to open the door. If we're not able to move forward with a developer that wants to do residential or the like, we're open to anything. And our realtor had done a great job over the years, we had always kept the property as a sign up, and if you're interested in it, come see us. But we directed him, please recontact everybody that's had an interest in that property. Contact anybody that has a future use, maybe in the I two type of uh uh industrial usage of it. And frankly, we came up with quite a few leads and uh options. As of right now, we have four other options on that property to move forward with. We think that for the neighbors and for Laramie, meeting the needs of potential housing is the best one. One of the options is a distribution center. Now, it's early talks for this individual, but what they would do in essence is pretty well cover that area with a warehousing distribution system, much like what Packers or across the street has. But they would uh since it's a little bit smaller than what they need, there'd be a a quite a bit of uh trucks in and out. Uh but as I said, that's and it fits the requirements right now for the I two. Another one that is interested is out of Arizona and they are interested in doing self-storage. Their type of self-storage is anywhere from three to five stories high. Uh what they do is they allow it all enclosed. And frankly, they're nice looking and they feel like there's a need in Laramie. I know there's some self-storage up the street, but they feel like they can do one to two units of the high rise or of self-storage and maybe even some lower self-storage. The other two options that we are most interested in as far as the the talks have come the furthest at this stage are salvage yards. One out of Colorado would come in and he would include crushers on the site as well as some recycling. Another one is a more localized one that primarily would just be happy to start moving in the abandoned vehicles. Uh not so much on the crushing, he may develop to that point. But uh uh at this stage, he's ready to start operating it. Although he is not a purchaser, he is a long-term lease possibility. The other three possibilities are purchasers. So not trying to be a alarmist, but the reality of it is, we have reached the stage in our business where we're ready to move forward on getting rid of that property. And we uh through the realtor, we still have three, four other leads that we're following up on potential I two type of businesses that could go in there. So what we're looking at is trying to do frankly, what's best for Laramie. Uh certainly, we're interested in selling, but at the same time, we've made the commitment that we're gonna move forward on that property. There's a strong likelihood, I don't think you ever say something is going to happen, but there's a very strong likelihood that there's gonna be changes on that property within the next year. What we are at a point now is trying to decide what that might be. These uh the commission has the opportunity to try to address some issues that may help Laramie. If the property does not get changed, we are going to move forward with I two. And from the response we've had on that property, I can pretty well assure the community that uh there is going to be development on that property. And we aren't going to be the ones doing it, but we are going to have the option of who we sell to. And uh so it is not a threat, it's just the idea of, isn't it wonderful how it is and it is and remain that way? You know, most of us live in houses that at one time were raw property. And somebody decided to put a house up there. And I'm sure there were neighbors that said, oh, my gosh, that's gonna ruin my view, I don't like the direction that's going, but it happened. We are fortunate to be able to live in houses that uh somebody approved and said, we're going to move forward because it does end up helping the community. So the final line for us is, is that while we are interested in trying to work with Laramie, we are also as interested in selling it. My brother and I are to a stage where we're ready to retire in our lives. And part of our retirement comes from selling that property. So in the next year, something's gonna be happening on that property more than likely. What happens is somewhat in the hands of this commission is how they move forward. Can be part of a solution or can be part of uh remaining as it is and will move forward in that direction. So with that, I just uh would appreciate uh your consideration that I do honestly believe the option of potential housing on that property is best not only for Laramie, but is best for the neighborhood. And with that said, uh I just appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any, anybody else wish to address, Count? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Craig Aldrich. And my wife and I own the property to the east, the twelve acres, uh less the Spiegelberg building, plus two houses on Cedar. And I don't have comments as much as I have question. And my first question is if the most appropriate use is residential. I don't have a dog in this fight, just so you know. Why has it been industrial since the town was conceived? Second is, have you gotten anything positive in feedback from Westside Residence? Those are my two flips. You don't have to answer them, those are my two.
We're we're not allowed to answer.
I'm I'm not asking you to answer them, I ask you to think about it. Because on the last page of the decision frame that you were given, it says the question is not whether to allow development in a floodplain, that decision is governed by code. What best aligns with adopted plans, neighborhood compatibility and established city goals? Just asking, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody online? All right, well, I will open it up for uh the commission discussion. Before we go, is everybody familiar with the findings we need? We need to meet one or more of these findings uh on page twelve, uh technical memo to approve this. And I I believe we meet uh forty four dash two, four dot two dot one dot four dot. And this proposed amendment may result in unique development opportunities and will offer substantial benefits to the city. And I'll just leave that at that, Chris, I think it does. Anybody else want to carry on?
Mister Chairman, if I can jump in just for a second, uh just to be clear, all the findings do need to be met in order to um approve it, right? And it.
And it's not what it says.
It's it's it should be, if there's, if there's one finding that is not met, then essentially the the commission needs to address every finding and show that it's not met in order to deny it.
Oh, okay, you're going at it from the other side.
Chair, I've got a question.
Go ahead, Jake.
Circle back, um Eric or Mister Japp, if I can ask you a couple of questions about the utilities in the area for water and sewer. I thought that we had, when we revisited this property several years ago, that I thought there was some discussion on utilities, but I couldn't find it. But is there adequate water sewer to uh accommodate a larger residential development in that area?
I will chair or through you, um we haven't done a detailed analysis of that area since we don't know the exact what's gonna be placed in there of height, size, demands, anything like that. So we haven't at this time done any kind of detailed analysis to determine if there would be or wouldn't be adequate water and sewer. Now, with that being said, I mean, there is lines around the area that probably could supply just what would be required to make that happen, I don't know fully on that.
So as a follow up, if there were issues of, say, lack of water, lack of sewer, would it be on the developer to uh improve that to make that meet your standard?
It would be, it's up to the development to make sure that they're meeting that for the cost of that.
Okay, thank you.
What one of the question group, Mister Japp, would there a chance that this development would improve downstream conditions for water and sewer uh in into the community of West Laramie?
I'm sure through you, again, it's hard to say, but I mean, if the development was required to make improvements in the area of water or sewer, that could help improvements, y- you know, with other areas of the community. But that's difficult to answer without knowing what would actually be needed.
Donald?
Yes, I just want to be clear uh on this from what Philip said, because I had the same reading that you had. Uh just on at four dot two dot one. Must we meet one, two, three, four, five, all five of those conditions?
No, we only need to meet one. We have to go through them one by one if we're gonna deny them. If we're gonna deny the motion or the amendment.
Right.
Is that correct?
So miserable. So if if we're talk, Mister Honorable Chair through you. If you want to approve it, then all of them need to be met in affirmative. As we've stated here, as staff has has shown, so all five
Yes.
need to be met. If the commission wishes.
Again, deny.
Correct, so that one would be.
So.
Would be true, right.
So there are four other relevant.
And so if there, if if the means to to deny this request, then one needs to be um justified by the commission as not being met. And that would be grounds for for denial, but yes.
I had to just double checking the livelihood of the ordinances and I was looking, the site that's provided is fourteen oh six oh sixty, which is all of the review procedures. There's a specific section within that that deals with the comprehensive plan. Does anybody know offhand what that is, just so we can find in the ordinance, the applicable criteria? I'll continue to look.
That's fifteen oh six, point oh six oh, right?
Yeah, do we have a more specific site from the staff?
Okay.
X dot.
Yeah, dot X dot, yeah. All right, how do we want to proceed on this? Anybody have any other discussion on this?
Should we just go through each one and have a discussion?
All right, we can do, do it that way. It's fine by me. First one is proposed amendment is based on a change in projections. Or assumptions from those on which the comprehensive plan is based. Uh, the comp plan was written in two thousand and seven, Philip, is that correct? And we've had three other reports adopted since then thrive. Uh, the housing study, there was one more. Also that we have a need for a change of something for, to increase housing. But uh, does anybody feel that it doesn't? What's the feelings of the commission on this?
I'd like to affirmatively state that I, I think that is clearly met that criteria.
Okay.
Given, given the studies that have been done and the increased need for housing and that focus. And that, that, that information did not exist when the comprehensive plan was originally adopted.
Was adopted in two thousand and seven, it was probably written in five and six, is when it was first worked on. All right, any other objections to?
They'd say that for two, three and four as well, that housing is the tail wagging the dog here. Conditions that have changed and are important to the city now.
Okay. Does anybody?
If I could jump in again, um. To uh, Council, uh, Woman Pacino's question. A- as we look deeper, the review criteria, i- if the review criteria, it's actually flipped. And that in order to deny it, none of them.
Right, so.
This, this body needs to show that none of them are met, but in order to approve only one. Or more is how it reads.
That's what I thought.
So you were, so you were right originally.
You only need one.
You only need one.
Yeah, but it is, it's X three, the approval criteria. Um, the full site, yeah. It's X. Three.
Okay, well, seeing as how we agree that. You know, proposed justification number one is, you know, right there in black and white and we all agree to it. The chair will entertain a motion. Donald?
Before you do that, I just want to make a comment. Uh, and the comment is relates to. Uh, so if we only have to approve, if we only have to agree with one of them, and I agree with three of the four. And then one is, is uh. Not germane, and that's four dot one dot, sorry, four dot two dot one dot four. Uh, so proposal amendment may result in unique development opportunity, I beg your pardon. The proposed amendment may result in unique development opportunities will offer substantial benefits to the city. That's where I have pause here, and the reason why I have pause is uh, I looked at.
Your life.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Um, uh, I looked at uh, the current development plan. And the first sentence on chapter five began with the sentence, housing should be safe and decent in that order. I don't think this is safe at the moment, until we have some kind of assurance that um. Uh, there will be flood control measures put in place here. I'm concerned it may have knock-on effects for the West Side neighborhood. So it may result in unique development opportunities that will offer substantive, substantial benefits to the city. But they also present the city with risks. And I think there's a reason why this plot of land has been vacant for decades. And I think the reason is it basically acts as a sponge for overflow in the city. And it served that purpose well. The risk would be lower if there's industrial development on the site. The ones that have been li- listed by one of the folks from the, the owner of the land. I mean, they're not particularly attractive, but they would have to go through a, an approval process. So that it doesn't represent a risk to neighbors in that area. I'm just concerned about the risk and for that reason, I'll vote for this.
Yeah.
Because uh, I agree with three of the five conditions, but there's one that gives me concern.
Well, I think, uh, question for staff, uh. Under I two zoning, if you wanted to put in a storage shed, it would not need a site plan. He could just do it administratively, or if it was other commercial uses. You wouldn't even need a site plan, you'd just go build it.
Chair through you, so any development um, on that site outside of, let's say, something wants to occupy. Um, the feed store and it's of the same use level, that would then maybe require a site plan type one. However, anything outside of that will still require a site plan type three. So in all zoning districts, there's not a zoning district that gets kind of a free pass from. Being held to our city code that's been put in place to protect our citizens. And so for I two, it would have to go through the site plan type three. Same for a large residential, it would also have to go through that same application of code to ensure safety. Um, and again, if they wanted to split it into multiple lots and they'd have to go through the preliminary and final plat process.
Thank you. Chris?
I, I guess I just have to assume that the engineering and all the process that the, those floodplain and. Modification of design to protect public health and safety will be done. You know, I mean, at this point, you just have to take the, I think, the leap of faith that it'll be done properly. If it's going to cost more money for the developer to do it properly, then they take on that extra cost. And, and whatever associated risk, risk there is to go.
Sure.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I did want to just uh, make sure we have the record straight. Um, so I have found the exact site and the ordinance that I think is. Into the uh, record and I will read it out, it's fairly long. But the, the criteria um, applicable to our decision come from the Laramie's municipal code. It's fifteen point oh six, point six zero, point X, point three. Point little E, point little Roman numeral I, one, three. Parentheses, three, and that does say that the planning um. Commission shall not approve and the city council shall not certify unless the application meets one or more. And I do agree with the staff report that other than the one that is um, not applicable. The criteria are met as the staff report has indicated. So um, it, I'll, I'll wait to see if there's any other discussion, but I am prepared to make a motion.
Well, I, if I can, just as a personal opinion on. This, I believe this should go forward uh, with the uh, comprehensive plan. My concern is that the city has for far too long placed a very low priority. On West Side and now here we are looking at adding more development. To an area that has a lot of problems with stormwater and drainage. But being part of the stormwater process from, for years now, going on three years, I guess, almost three years. West Side still isn't on the priority list very high and still fairly low on the priority list, if it's on there at all. So I, the city, we need the development, but I also think the city has a commensurate responsibility to start. Doing something for that entire neighborhood. Uh, and if we're going to have a stormwater fee, I'd like to see that priority go up on there so we can carry on with development. I think we need residential development there, but I think we need to improve the infrastructure considerably. On what's already existing, because I think it's substandard. But that's just my opinion and has nothing to do with the law or section fifteen dash add infinitum. So if there's any other discussion? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
So I'd like to move to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six. Amending future land use plan map, map three point two of the comprehensive plan. For the properties described in the resolution, for an area approximately thirty-three acres in size. By changing the future land use designation from you see that's urban commercial. To you are urban residential, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law. And to forward the item to city council for certification.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, do we need a roll call vote on this? Yeah, we'll have a roll call vote.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans is absent. Is there white?
Aye.
Moody?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Matamore?
Aye.
That is six yeses, zero no's and one absent.
Ryan, would you mind pulling up the PowerPoint again and starting at slide thirteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Chair through you, our honorable chair and planning commission, it's good to be before you again this afternoon for the second time in a row. The second item is that same request to rezone. The thirty-two acre four G enterprise parcel from I two industrial to R three multifamily residential. Staff again also recommends including the triangular one point one five acre parcel just south of the main parcel. To ensure planning best practice with consistent zoning boundaries. As we covered, this request is being heard concurrently with the comprehensive plan amendment. Because the plan has been amended to urban residential, then R three is the appropriate implementing zoning district. As outlined in table three point one on page four of the staff report. So going into why the change is needed, the existing I two zoning reflects the site's industrial passed along the Union Pacific Rail Corridor. Industrial uses today in that area would be incompatible with Optimus Park, the Laramie River Greenbelt and nearby residential areas. Leaving I two zoning in place creates the risk of reintroducing heavy uses with noise, truck traffic and pollutants. Directly adjacent to valued green spaces, corridors and neighborhoods. And then if you wouldn't mind going to slide fourteen. So in the following slides, I've gone ahead and pulled up the use table again. The use table is many pages long, so I'd highly recommend pulling it up if you have any questions on what uses are allowed in each zoning district. Um, but you'll see in the yellow highlight, those are the main uses allowed within the R three zoning district. And then if you go to the next slide. I've gone ahead and highlighted I two, again, I two does cover many more pages. So if you want the full list, definitely pull up table fifteen point ten, table of uses, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. And then the one after that. And so that just kind of gives an overview of some of the uses again, not comprehensive. And so if you want the full list, um, go ahead and check out that use table. But for what the rezoning accomplishes, it, it has consistency with plans. So now that the future land use is designated with urban residential, R three is the direct and appropriate implementing district. I also want to address too that in two thousand and seven, um, the future land use plan did go ahead and designate that area urban commercial. Again, kind of that downtown, so either way, um, even whether it's back in two thousand and seven or today. There was acknowledgement that change was kind of needed in that area, as you said. West Side does need more, more attention in that, in that area. And so going on to, to housing supply, so we have multiple plans that do identify. A range of housing units that we are short by. And that are a key barrier to Laramie's growth. And the rezoning helps address that shortage on a large infill site, which are generally preferable to develop over new greenfield sites. Outside of the city. And then also I do want to acknowledge that historically zoning put the burden of industrial adjacency on the West Side neighborhood. And this rezoning helps in part represent a corrective step, ensuring future development in residential. Um, rather than industrial. It's also worth emphasizing as well that this is a landowner voluntarily requesting to downzone their property. From industrial to residential for a thirty-two acre parcel, which is a rare alignment of private initiative and public need. And that can maybe help go to explain as well is unless staff is directed, directed, we don't typically go about rezoning. Large swaths of the city. And so it's, again, it's that rare alignment that's come before is today for this rezoning request. And then for compatibility, if you wouldn't mind going to slide nineteen. Um, R three zoning is common throughout Laramie and serves as a logical transition. Between R two residential and business zoning districts. Also, this site is separated from the core neighborhood by existing parcels and roadway frontage ensuring compatible edges. Going into public comments and code protections, there have been, again, those four public inquiries. Two public comments that were forwarded via email and four in-person public comments at the last meeting. Concerns again were very similar to what we just discussed about stormwater, traffic, the southern parcel and the neighborhood compatibility. And those are acknowledged, so by code, all development must retain or detain stormwater on site. So post-development runoff does not exceed pre-development levels. Traffic impact analysis will be required if thresholds are met with mitigation required as necessary. Including the southern triangular parcel, again, it's that very narrow sliver at the bottom and it helps maintain a consistent zoning. Um, boundary and avoids leaving behind a narrow sliver of industrial zoning, which would weaken the map's long-term logical pattern. And this again follows the city's longstanding best practice of applying zoning consistently and predictably across contiguous parcels. And so just kind of finally, again, wanting to emphasize that this decision isn't about a specific site design or number of units. Um, for all of these, we have to make sure we're keeping in mind the range of uses allowed in R three. Versus those allowed in I two, um, no development is ever guaranteed. And so again, it's important to consider those that are allowed by right within each zoning district. And how it aligns with the neighborhood context and cities adopted policies. Staff's professional opinion is that R three achieves that alignment and supports Laramie's long-term goals for housing. And neighborhood compatibility, and so we do recommend approval of the rezoning for both properties. And I'd love to open it up to any questions.
Just one, you have, you, you finally heard back from the owner of the triangular property at, on the south side.
Chair through you, so same as last meeting, we had had that one phone call. Um, from Ellen Becker Oil, asking some questions about what that, that would mean. Um, so we answered their questions, we haven't received any official um, public comment that be written or. Um, that we could pass on to you all, so we still don't have a public comment for that. However, again, just in terms of best practice and kind of going back a little bit to what I spoke in the comprehensive plan amendment. Is that when the city has made um, zoning changes, there are some areas that do go ahead and kind of get grandfathered in. And that's why we have the non-conforming um, uses standards within our city code.
So, so basically they can grandfather in their existing commercial use on that sliver, but any. Close anything new, it would have to be within the R three um, menu of.
Chair through you, um, that is correct. And again, it is the sliver and basically what it's being used for now is just it has portions of driveway. Um, that lead to both A and C Feed Company and Ellen Becker Oil, there's no structure. Um, to my knowledge on that parcel, um, it, it starts, I want to say around like twenty-four feet wide. Um, outside of the floodway, narrows down to less than a foot of, under Ellen Becker Oil. And so that's currently what, what its use has been.
So if it's access and they needed to improve it, paint it, uh, maybe like that, they could not do that. They would have to leave it as, as it currently is, so, do I understand that correctly? They would have to leave it as, as it currently is. So, do I understand that correctly?
Chair through you, um, so and also as well, Derek and Philip, feel free to jump in. But access itself isn't its own use. Normally that's an agreement between private property owners. And so I would go ahead and cede to Derek or Philip regarding how we've worked that in the past since it is such a unique parcel with how thin it is.
Yes, honorable chair through you. In this case, the parcel does need to have direct access on a um, public right of way, right? So, uh, that needs to be established. Again, that's the developer's responsibility. There are other ways that this property could be accessed, as mentioned in the technical report. I mean, YDOT has said that there is a possibility for another entrance off the Snowy Range Road. But typically, um, for access through another property, I mean, in a, a filed access agreement with the county on this piece, on that effective piece of property would be required so that that access would remain there in perpetuity. So it could be established, but I just want to make sure we're clear that there's other ways to serve this property as well.
First, do, do you think that, um, by change, uh, zoning this R three, that, that there would be any future motivation for the, the, the I two properties that are between what will be, what may be R three and the, and the residences along Cedar Street? Um, of, of, of that, those commercial properties being converted to R three so that there's continuity, actual continuity between the existing residences and this opposed R three.
Chair through you. That is a good question. I will remind that currently, um, even back in two thousand and seven, again, that whole swath of land was established as urban commercial, um, including those industrial sites. However, like I mentioned before too, um, unless staff is directed, we typically do not go, um, around rezoning large areas of property. So unless directed, we would likely wait until a landowner came to us for that.
Right. So do you think that the, the brownfield phase two designation was, was instrumental in, in sort of opening this property up for an R three designation?
Chair through you, um, that's hard to say, and I would, I would maybe also go to the applicant as well, um, and see if they had any insight. But for the, the brownfield, basically, if there's a site that's contaminated, that liability is on the property owner. Um, kind of no matter what the use is, um, if someone took a suit to it, the liability would be with the property owner. And so that's what the brownfield can help address, um, is that liability aspect. So I can't really speak one way or the other to if it opened it up or not, but it's definitely always valuable to have additional information. And it looks like Derek has a comment as well.
Yeah. Chair, if you don't mind, I mean, I, I was one of the primary people that worked on that, that project. And really, you know, the purpose of those brownfield assessments through the EPA are to try to promote properties that have kind of remained stagnant, right? Um, if, when you read, when you read the definition of what a brownfield is, is not necessarily that there is contamination, but there may be perceived contamination. And like in this property, we found that it was pretty limited. But I think more to speak to the development proposal that was there was the purpose of that process was to try to, try to provide some vision or some other, uh, scenario that someone might be a little bit outside the box, right? Uh, for that property that historically, we know hadn't been thought of, right? For the most part, since the railroad abandoned their, what was machine shop, right? I think it was. I mean, really, the property hasn't been used. And so I think the brownfield process, whether it results in actually the housing that was shown in that study or something similar, I think it does promote kind of that idea of future development, something else could go there. Maybe tries to provide some, you know, broader context to the area that maybe just isn't intuitive, I guess, to the, to the, to somebody just looking at a map of vacant land, I guess. So, yep.
All right, Bert?
Yeah, I just had a quick, um, procedural thing. Um, someone on Zoom asked to make sure that you're speaking into your microphones.
Oh.
And make sure they're on, just so they can hear. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Jenna, go ahead.
So when they did that, was the assumed current land use, which is industrial commercial, used as the, um, and assumes, because in some of those types of reports, they go assume residential because that's not the future land use. And those are different screening levels and tolerances for contamination.
That, that's actually a great question. Um, they assumed that there would be something other than industrial. And so they did look at residential uses and plan for everything from single family all the way to, uh, you know, multifamily, senior, uh, and pretty much any type of housing really is what was kind of promoted there as well as some commercial, uh, commercial nodes or pockets in there that would kind of represent that, like, traditional, like historic neighborhood type commercials uses were the kind of the primary uses that were encompassed in that whole report. So.
Any other questions? Any online? No. Yeah, Chris.
I'm mistaken. Um, in, in response to sort of, um, compatibility, uh, issue, um, on page five of, of the, the tech manual on the West Side Vision Study, um, says residents express strong interest in preserving neighborhood scale, small homes, and eclectic design. Concerns included flooding connectivity and infrastructure. While wary of development, residents acknowledge the importance of balancing growth with neighborhood values. Just want to remind that that's apparently what this study saw as what the residents of West Side wanted. And so, you know, if the development can bring those things into play as much as possible, would be great.
Well, that's probably better left for the applicant. Uh, Miss Strangie, would you care to contribute?
Honorable chair, members of the commission, uh, as the applicant, again, I think, uh, I would encourage your approval, uh, in an R three as that's what the owners have asked for and allows the most variability in, uh, types of development. I know we can, when you look at the work that I think was initiated between Derek and the four G company to take a look at what else could be done, um, is really kind of a, a twist in. Um, typically in my background, I did a lot of housing development and land development over the course of my career. And typically you don't get, uh, a person who has a chunk of land to say, I'll look at something else. And so it was a pretty exhaustive process. Um, two things that I believe that came out of that that were very beneficial, not only to the landowner, but to, for a knowledge base for the city is a phase one, the phase two environmental was done on it. And what were there, fourteen, fifteen core samples? Pulled out of that area to verify that we're going to be able to do something safe, something that, you know, can maintain it. The reason to ask for R three is to allow for the most variability um, for a potential buyer to say, you know, once again, it's blank slate. And then it goes through the process, uh, all the development process, all the hearings that would typically go through, uh, come before you, uh, to develop a property as a plats developed and a use and an ultimate in use is developed. So it doesn't, uh, go into R three, uh, from the applicant's perspective. And I believe, I'm sure Mr. Geis is still on the line. From the owner's perspective, is that, uh, it's, it's not one bite at the apple. It's there's still, the process still has to be followed. This just allows the most variability for use.
We're odd. Go ahead, Sharon.
Sure. I had, uh, one question, um, for Mr. Henzie. So, um, it sounds like there were, you had a fair number of meetings with the staff before you made this application. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth. Um, I just wanted to check, there is a, a note in the staff report of, um, efforts to contact the owner of that small little piece that they made. Um, and I didn't know whether you.
The owner of the property has.
The little, the little sliver that is going to be folded in.
Working on getting that loop connected.
Uh, okay, because I, um, it is, you know, we try not to surprise somebody.
Yeah.
Uh, by rezone. And so to your knowledge, do you know whether that contact has been made?
They have reached out. I don't know what status, and maybe we can ask Mr. Geis.
Okay.
If they, if they've closed that loop.
Okay, and.
It's kind of a unique situation where, where the applicant usually would be an engineering company or a, um, but based on relationships and the work that the Chamber Business Alliance has done in trying to forward housing. And this isn't the only piece of property that I've talked to somebody about, like, hey, would you be interested in switching that to housing? Hey, would you be interested in annexing in and doing housing? Hey, would you be looking for any place we can start to pull the, pull the string of how do we solve this housing situation? I think later you'll hear from another business that has moved to town and is struggling with getting housing. So, uh, for their employees that they're moving in that are really high-end, really tech-driven, innovative jobs. So, um, it's, I'm, I'm willing to sit down and talk to anybody, anybody about housing. Uh, I have a long relationship with the Geises, and so it was being able to go to a, a, a landowner that I knew. So. Without I take any other questions as well.
Mr. Geis is still online. Would, uh, would you like to, uh, as, as a real applicant, would you like to address the commission? He's got his hand up.
Yes. Am I available now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's a good question. Uh, that particular sliver of land, for a number of years, we did not even know we did not own that. And the Ellen Beckers went ahead and bought it. We've had a longstanding relationship with them. Frankly, uh, we use them, our, that property to get into A and C Feed. At the same time where their drives are, uh, into their station and into their bulk station, uh, they use property of ours. We've had longstanding gentleman's agreement. We've talked about it. That has been increased to the point that we are, now that we're in our contract, that, uh, something should be and more than likely will be, uh, finalized and legalized on that. The reason it hasn't happened yet is that as not, excuse me, as not being the developer, we don't want to put into writing at this stage exactly where those, uh, uh, exchanges are going to be. We felt it was more pertinent to allow the future property owner with their design and how they need to access the property from that street to work with them, uh, to put it where it would best benefit both sides. But, uh, there's been a long time gentleman agreement on using the, each other's property. Uh, it should be and will be more formalized, but it would be with the new property owner with the design plans that they have. Uh, we're not trying to limit, uh, the new property or the potential, uh, purchaser in any way on how the best access for what his needs are. But, uh, our discussions have been ongoing and they continue and they're friendly, they're good. Uh, on the other hand, we have had contact with, uh, the state of Wyoming and internet from the north side is certainly a strong possibility, and it looks like, uh, that could be done as well. But w- we're hopeful, or at least I think the future purchaser is hopeful to be able to, uh, uh, access it from north and south. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a question for him?
Yeah. So, so that's, uh, this Commissioner Bucino, and that's, um, very helpful information about the potential access. I, I just wanted to ask whether you had any, uh, specific information about the owner's, uh, knowledge of, uh, the action to, um, rezone this, whether that's something that you have, uh, made the owner of that sliver aware of.
Yes, uh, uh, he was surprised to, uh, find out that the, he had some property that was under, uh, review. Uh, that was there again, put forth by the city. Uh, I think with him having a little better understanding of exactly what it is and what's happening on it and why, uh, he feels more comfortable with that. But I, I certainly don't want to speak for him. But the last conversations we have had is that, uh, he was wondering what was happening with the property. And, uh, we said this was part of the rezoning that the city put forth. But, um, our concern is access for both of pieces of our properties, and, um, I, I don't foresee any type of issue with that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No other questions. Well, we'll just go, uh, to the public comments. Anybody from the public, where should you address the zoning matter? Please come up, state your name for the record.
Hi, hi, my name is Jonathan Paris. Um, so I lead the local office for Saffron Passenger Innovations. It's a, a technology and aerospace company that recently moved in, um, into Laramie. I also participate in the county housing commission as well. We'd like to stay really involved in the community as much as we can. Um, I can't speak to the specifics of this, of this property itself, but I can certainly attest to the importance of housing being a crucial issues for, uh, for our employees and for recruiting new employees to and, and back to, to Laramie. Um, I'm proud to say that we've grown the office substantially in the last couple of years. And I think, um, any progress we can make on housing will, will help us continue that momentum, which is definitely my number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello? Uh, my name is Wendy Chapman. I have lived on the west side for twenty-seven years. And this land is like my backyard. I can see it out my window. Um, Chair and Commissioners, I have, I have put together a few notes as I've just listened to so much, so much of this talking. So hopefully it all comes together. Um, so the, here's a few random things. The price of insurance is already high, and people might not be able to afford flood insurance. Raising the height of new properties makes existing properties more vulnerable. That would be, uh, all of our homes on the west side. Basements in our neighborhood on the west side already flood as things are right now. Rezoning might be a good idea, but why don't we think outside the box? I'm asking the city of Laramie to appreciate the land as it is. Let's explore the possibility of a land swap, similar to what was done for the Pilot Hill project, and call this land a park and an extension of the Green Belt complex, along with serving as an outlet or a sponge for rainwater. Someone said earlier that if this land is bu- built on, sorry. Oh, someone said earlier that, yeah, the developer belt bears the risk. And if this land is built on at all, the existing community will bear the risk. If the land is rezoned to residential, can the request please be changed to R two instead of R three? Dense housing and more impermeable surfaces in that area might make the current west side unlivable. It seems like the current west side residents and taxpayers would be thrown under the bus while preference is given to developers. Plan to improve storm drainage won't be implemented until sometime in the future when funds can be raised. Building on that land before storm drainage has been updated would leave current residents of the west side even more vulnerable. For all of these reasons, I ask you all to vote no on this rezoning request. Residential is probably better than industrial, but please rezone it to R two instead of R three, which would be the same as the current west side neighborhood. And thank you for reminding us that the size and scale of any new development should match existing homes on the west side, which has recently received a historic designation. Now, I'll come back to what I, what I think is the best idea. No harm in throwing out my wishes, right? So I would ask, can we please explore the possibility of doing a land swap similar to what was done for Pilot Hill? This would mitigate any possible loss for the current owners of the four G land and preserve this land as it has been for so long, along with protecting the residents of the west side from an increased risk of flood, flooding due to development and impermeable surfaces added to that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody online? All right, well, we'll just move on to discussion. Uh, I'm generally in favor of this. I do want to let the public and the commission know there will be a site plan for this. And it had better look good, you know, and not force water onto anybody else's property as is code and is, uh, under state statute. So, I think, uh, we will get another opportunity, at least two more opportunities. We've got a preliminary plat and a final plat that will come before this body for approval. And I think having two engineers and a couple of builders on this commission, I think we can look at it and make sure that it doesn't do any harm to any other community, anybody or neighbors or anything like that, or the river. So, I think I'm generally in favor. Anybody else have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification on, on just a comment you just made is if this is approved by city council, the rezoning piece, then there is a chance that the applicant doesn't choose to subdivide and develop just on this land. There is an avenue to which it would never come back to a, a, this body for approval, unless there's a conditional use permit or something like that. Because a site plan type three could be done on an unfatted property if it's not subdivided.
Then he'd have to put in all apartments or rental housing.
There, I, I just want to make it clear, there are avenues in which it would not come back for, for review to, to this body.
Well, how likely is that?
I mean, i- it's hard to say, Mr. Chair, but the conceptual drawings that we've seen thus far have two large apartment buildings on it that satisfy R3 criteria. And those done, could be done as a type three site plan, which would be approved administratively.
Okay, so it's likely. All right, thank you. That can be part of our deliberations here. Any discussion, any comments?
Well, related to that, I did, I did have a question for staff. Um, about, um, I, I was curious in terms of the site plan that, that you would at least, the staff would at least review. When, when you're looking at the stormwater controls related to the proposed development on the particular parcel, can you describe, um, uh, the relationship of the activity on that parcel to the adjacent land? And how does that fit into, uh, the review of the site plan?
Uh, Chair through you. Uh, so I think the question was if there's a site plan that came through, how does, how is the impact on adjacent properties evaluated? Okay. Uh, for, for stormwater, um, the applicant would not be able to release any more stormwater than is, than would be released before the property had any development. So, there would be that historic vacant release rate. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, likely they would choose to release directly to the Laramie River, rather than to a street or an adjacent property. But that would be part of the review is that their discharge can't, you can't change the, the nature of it. Um, yep.
Donald? So, that implies there would be at least one large detention pond present, right?
Yes, in order to meet that, they would have to have a detention pond.
Because that was one of the concerns I have. And looking at the conceptual plans, maybe I missed it. Maybe I missed swimming pools, but I did not see a detention pond.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to that. I have not seen the site plan. But to meet that requirement, they would have to detain, to have detention to meet that requirement.
So, what are the consequences if there, if there is flooding that someone judges is a result of the development? Is that, do, do people go through the courts? What happens? Is this, does the city manage that to deal with, uh, if, let's say there's a detention bond that's not big enough, and there is significant flooding and people lose property? How is that issue then ends up being resolved? I'm probably talking outside my lane.
Yeah, and I don't want to get outside my lane. But yeah, typically, that's, that probably between those two landowners would be a legal issue. But yeah, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to get too far onto that.
There is, there is a basis for a legal claim there. I don't know if you necessarily want to get into that, but, but it is, it can be considered a nuisance if you're putting water onto somebody else's land.
Anything else? Mr. Engie?
I just feel compelled. There, there are no plans on this now. So, to Phillips, if you were going to come in, uh, the, they would have to initiate the entire swath of 33 acres. Having been in development, uh, that's a pretty insurmountable risk that you would have to take as a developer to say, I'm going to push forward on 33 acres with, you know, with not going through anything. You'd want to subdivide it to be able to subdivide your risk. Any subdivision requires another, uh, outside of what, what could you do, uh, sorry, what could you, i- is there even a, you couldn't even really do, uh, a lot line adjustment or anything without having some, uh, form of action to come through the planning department. There's not really a way to cap your risk as a developer. It would be too insurmountable. And right now, all they, all they ask is, is to go to R3 with no plans, so that it has to progress through the city departments, uh, to have a next phase done. I just wanted to clarify.
Sharon?
No, I didn't have a question. I, I thank you for your comment. In fact, I, I just wanted to think, uh, the public for all the comments that were made. I mean, I think, um, they, they ensured that we had a thorough and thoughtful, uh, discussion. And the idea about the land swap and parcel, I mean, in, in my mind, but I do want to confirm this with the staff, um, I don't, I can't see a reason why the rezoning to R3 would preclude in any way exploration of that possibility. Is that correct? It would not preclude that.
Chair through you, that is correct.
Donald? Not seeing any further discussions. Somebody care to make a motion?
I, I'm opposed to recommend that the city council approve of the, the city of Laramie's official zoning map, rezoning two properties with the total size of approximately 33 acres from I2 industrial to R3 multifamily zoning.
Are you a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call on this one? Yes, okay. Thought we did. Clerk, if you would be so kind.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans is absent. Heiser White? Moody?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Madam Moore?
Aye.
Uh, six yeses, zero noes, and one absent.
Hey, that's Louie Vinda. Uh, I believe we have no long-range planning projects to talk about, which is too bad. We should have a whole bunch, but we don't. All right, uh, Chair, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. And thank you to the west side. You're the best residents in the city of Laramie.